August twenty. Want to call to order the August twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting of the North Beach Planning Commission. Uh, we have three items on the agenda tonight. Uh, the first one isn't particularly exciting. The minutes, we're proving minutes from last month's meeting. Any comments, suggestions, edits? I wasn't here, so I will. Let's see. Well, this, this is not from the last meeting. This is the meeting before that or what?
Uh, no, seven. Yeah, seven twenty-four. So why?
Because the last meeting I saw on my phone. And I don't recall having done a lot of work on. The. Making the motions, but maybe I did.
Yeah, he did.
I did? Okay, then. It's all good. Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Right?
Alright.
Okay.
Are you guys using microphones? Cause I can't hear you.
Uh, we're not using microphones.
Big mic.
Cause we're not up here. We're here.
Microphone right there.
That's for you. You'll speak up or you could move up or?
We'll do our best to.
So typically, this is not as well attended as tonight. And most of the time, everybody ends up who needs to sit forward, ends up sitting forward. I'll bring these down. I'll turn on some more speakers. But we do have one that pushes it out a little bit louder to zoom.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Yeah.
We can share this one maybe than that you guys can share.
Alright, I'm gonna just look over your show.
You can.
Oh, there she is.
Yoshi boy. He's dead. He's twenty years old. He's passed.
Um, the second item on the agenda is revised um, application shops at North Beach. Um, we can maybe go over that briefly. Um, I can read some of the um, the staff report from this. Uh, just a few uh, points. Um. A two-story commercial building of approximately fourteen thousand five hundred square feet of space. First floor consists of one restaurant, approximately thirty-five thousand, thirty-five hundred square feet and retail space of approximately eight thousand six hundred square feet. The second floor consists of approximately two thousand three hundred fifty square feet of office space. Got better?
Yes, yes.
Good. We'll have to share this, so we'll have to.
You can just speak.
Uh. And as always, you may or may not know, this is a corner of Fifth and Bay.
So I think it's um.
And Chesapeake. In between, but the doesn't.
It's primarily this is corner of Bay, Fifth, I would say. Doesn't run all the way to.
So there's a long Fifth Street, but the front is Bay. And then there's additional frontage going down Fifth Street where you've got the shops.
Um, within, it's within floodplain. Um, it's within a critical area designation. W two zoning lot sizes thirty-eight thousand square feet. We have a rendering here from Fifth Street. Looking south. Uh, background, uh, meeting of twenty-four, July twenty-four, last month, planning commission gave preliminary approval for development proposal for the shops at North Beach as outlined. Applicant was asked to present a site plan showing detailed parking, refuge pickup areas. Grease trap locations, landscaping and enhance the architectural features of the south facing side. Backside. This view, water and sewer locations. Applicant has submitted revised plans with those inclusions. Might be worth it to read the Department of Public Works comments. So everybody has an understanding of that. Um, and these are comments from, from DPW. Um, if approved by planning commission, approval should be contingent on full engineered site plan for utilities to include. Full water closet, individual meters for each rental space, complete analysis of sewer line rate, a fall forming grease interceptor. To tie in to ensure proper flow prior to any issuance of permanent applications to the county. Current site plan shows exit a parking area onto Bay Avenue. Suggestion is to have it directed back into the large portion of the paid parking area for exit to prevent lost parking along Bay Avenue.
What you regarding that parking is that? Exit would be where the concession stand is now. Is there any parking right in front of there right now? In front of the concession stand? There is.
That might, might be helpful for everybody if you could take a few minutes to do that.
My name is Rob Rousseau and I've been developing in this town. On the, on the location for quite some time. And this is a project that we, you've seen many, many times and we've been working on it for some time. Uh, I'll show you what the initial elevation looked like as viewed from Bay Avenue. I did present this at the last meeting. So that the folks in the audience can see this is what was approved by the Council of Planning some time ago. And we've been working with this particular rendering. This is the so-called shop that we're probably looking at. This is a future development site, but it may or may not be what you see there. But in every case, when you, you then uh. Market of virtual, have virtual market studies. On that particular proposal and we just could not make it work because it was just too much. And the prices would have had to be too high to, in order to make it financially successful. So we tried a number of different renditions. And what you see there is now a sale store. Along Fifth Street, which has seven fifteen hundred square foot shops. Which we would anticipate to be for both local businesses as well as business that, businesses that would attract tourists. A combination of both of them. The front building is like, uh, as Jerome pointed out, a thirty-five hundred square foot. Restaurant on the first floor and two small offices on the second floor. And that overlooks the bay and the entire. Side, both the north side, which is what you see there and the south side would have a walkway. Along the side of the building, along the shops. And you'd have the. The color combinations that we would provide. And I'll give this to you, pass it on. It's a light blue. Signing, white trim.
Your lights can't do that.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, that's my computer talking to you for some reason. Yeah.
That's mine. Light blue for the side. White for the trim and then dark blue for the, for the, for the roof. Again, very, very. More argumentative room than the thought selections. The, you have the south elevation by any chance? We made some considerable improvements to that since we have met last month with this project. Do you have the south elevation? Things down below. Yes, yeah, that's it. We put, uh, as suggested by the planning commission last month, we added some fundamental. Flakes in the roof line. We, we put in the doors and windows and of course the rail. Passageway along the entire length of the, of the building. The uh. Force of this building is considerably less than this one. Because of the reduced area. Uh, we are also able to build this. Based upon our studies without concrete, I'm not concrete, but driving piles. I was very concerned about that because we have a new building to the north, which is a library. We have a, a, a building at South Winds, which is put up a few years ago. And of course, we got Baywalk, which we built years ago. And I was concerned that the tremors from pounding those wooden piles would have a negative effect on, on those particular buildings. So we've come up with an engineering solution. We're putting in a, a, a concrete mat with sonar, sonar tubes. Which will be sufficient to carry the loads that we have here. So that should give you a pretty good idea of what, what the building will look like. Uh, the number of spaces, we have seven offices. I think about seven retail shops, about fifteen hundred square feet apiece. We have the, the restaurant, it'll be about thirty-five hundred uh, square feet on the first floor of the two-story building. And then two offices above that, uh, which will be about nine hundred square feet apiece. I'm sorry? Nearly five hundred square feet, something about, uh, I'm guessing. Seventy-five, hundred feet, hundred feet. I'm not really sure. No, 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 no.
You're. Ron, your structural drawings show driven piles, two hundred and eighty of them.
I understand it.
Okay, so you're not doing what's on your drawings. You've changed the story.
Mentioned that to, uh, correct, uh, a couple of days ago because our continuing studies suggest. That we are taking a risk, which I'm not. At this particular age, particularly, I'm not willing to take whether we got to what damage driving those piles may do to neighboring buildings.
Can you order the piles?
Uh, yeah, but that's even more expensive. But the solution we have is structurally been recommended by my structural engineer. Who's been with me for about thirty years. So I have no problems putting in the kind of system that he's recommending.
Well, we like to see that because typical footers are, can, you know, can be undermined by water. In the proximity to water.
There's a de-watering process that we will do.
Before the installation, but I mean thereafter.
I understand.
Footers are not that deep, typically not like piles.
Yeah, we got the water there.
Okay. Um, so the last time we saw this, it was all retail. Now it's got a restaurant.
Well, the restaurant has always been there.
It was originally all retail. Now, maybe the last iteration.
Original.
Well, the one that we have.
The last one.
I have a copy. Well, prior to that. So now that you have a restaurant in there. The question I have, if I can just, like, it's easier for me to just get up and walk and show you just to make sure I understand what we're doing. This is the side. The south side is the side that faces. The parking lot in Chesapeake, I don't know. This will all be visible from Chesapeake and from Bay.
Correct.
Correct. Now, is this walkway continued for public use?
No.
Okay. And there's an entrance here. Is this considered an entrance for public going to the entrance from here? Because, the reason I'm asking is because if this is the restaurant.
No, that's not the restaurant.
Yeah.
So if this is the restaurant, okay. You have a fair amount of infrastructure that goes with a restaurant. And typically is outside of the restaurant. You've got propane tanks for cooking. You've got oil recovery, not the grease waste that's underground, but the oil recovery. You have a food dumpster. Uh, oftentimes you've got carbon dioxide tanks for fire protection of the hood. So there's a fair amount of stuff that would be outside now, even with a thirty-five hundred square foot place. You've got to have walk-ins inside. You've got to have a bar. You've got to have storage. Sometimes those coolers end up being outside. Walk-ins and freezers. So although you have a trash dumpster up here, which is fine for retail. But it gets emptied once or twice a week. The food waste. The oil recovery, the propane tanks. The trash dumpster, food trash dumpster, all gets very visible here. And so I think that, I think I just want to see. Or just remind you of that and say that we're going to need some sort of enclosure. That incorporates this area. Because it's, it's, you know, if you look at any, behind any restaurant, they're just kind of a mess. And I don't think we want that exposure from Bay and Chesapeake. I don't think it's a big deal. It just needs some sort of an enclosure.
We don't, we, as you probably know, we own the entire site.
Yeah. And secondarily, I mean, there needs to be access. If you guys have in the restaurant, they're not going to come down here. These steps to bring their trash and their used oil, they're going to need some kind of correct. Access here from the back of that restaurant. So just a heads up on that. I don't know if that's ten and fit out or if that's you. But I think we need to see some kind of an enclosure there. Other than that, I love the design. Looks great.
Thank you. And we got something bothering me.
Absolutely. I love it. It's good.
I do. I, I feel very comfortable with this. I feel that it's very marketable. I think it's going to fit into the town wonderfully because it still maintains a small town image, which we've been for years. We're just dressing it up a bit.
Uh, there was, oh, the other thing was on the storm drain, you have one note on the elevation that says to tie the downspouts into the storm drain system. I'm assuming that applies to all downspouts on all elevations of the building. And then one is just a housekeeping note, your sewer line. From the grease waste comes out, makes a ninety, makes a ninety. I don't know why. Instead of just going straight out. And that way you can draw right now at your ninety, you would end up having to put a clean out underneath the handicap ramp, which would not be accessible. If you go straight out to the property line, you have to put a clean out there. You know what I mean? And that's where DPW talked about having those. Yeah, I don't know why I would put two nineties in there on it. It's relatively long run, so a couple hundred feet run from the grease waste. Anything else?
You know, that's a big question. Um, I walked it off yesterday. Measured that we're utilizing about a hundred and twenty feet of the parking lot. And that'll take, uh, my counted spaces that we're utilizing. It's about, um. Just under a hundred. We have capacity of about two hundred four spaces there. And so there is sufficient space for continual parking for the beachfront of the public. Beyond the property line where the restaurant and the shops would be. And there was also some thought. My mind is about opening an additional parking lot. I've discussed this with Rick once, once in the past. And that is the parking lot right next to the medical center here. Uh, we own that. It's about eighteen thousand square feet. But we can get a number of parking spaces in that probably by another.
Between medical center and senior center?
That's between the medical center and Fifth Street. That's true. So we can, if, if indeed the parking, and the parking is leaving in this town. You know, that's what we're going to, we're going to constantly, no matter what we do.
I don't know. I don't know.
I'm sorry.
You just said a question.
Hi, um, I got to work with the flood committee. And as we all know, that area has historically been prone to flooding. Not so much since pumps have been installed and.
Went through.
And, uh, I was wondering, you know, we're going to lose some permeable surface with the parking and the building, which is, which is very thorough. I'm wondering if the commission or you have thought about what we might need to do to buttress or enhance the pumping system because we're losing that permeable surface and maybe the more flood that.
Right.
Problem to flooding.
So the state actually considers that entire parking lot impervious. Impervious, the whole thing. So this development will actually add pervious space when the green spaces are added. So the way they look at compact gravel, it's. It's almost the same as concrete. That's why the flooding was there before that water would sit on top of there and not drain away.
Why is it adding pervies?
Well, it's going to add impervious space. They're going to add green space. So they're going to actually take away impervious space that's there now.
In the building and the sidewalk.
I would like to. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Well, I just wanted to point out that the, the whole lot is basically considered impervious now.
When we built Baywalk, we built it at eight feet above sea level. And it has never, not done wood, never been flooded, although on occasion when we get some good hurricane winds and, and water, it's, it laps against the bottom joint. Just to be safe on this, we raised it another six inches. So we're trying to do something that was, uh.
And we measured the elevation from there, cause that's the lowest point. And Baywalk and all the stores up there seem to be. A higher elevation.
Seven, eight elevation. Eight feet above.
Eight feet, right.
And we'll be at eight and a half. So we see a site plan.
Site plan? The next slide.
Peter, um, do you have a picture looking at it from the west side?
I have pictures of it. Every, of all four directions.
Can you see the full picture?
With the plan or the elevation? Somebody asked for the site plan and somebody asked for an elevation.
Whichever goes first, whichever most convenient.
So what's.
Site plan is the last page.
Site plan's at the very end, yeah.
Something else about we have this, uh, this, I think, the view. It's my thought that, you know, the fence that we have surrounding the parking lot, the two-rail fence. I think that's very attractive. And what we'd like to do is. Bring it down a little bit, like I mentioned, up there. This is the, uh, this is the road coming in. You know, Chesapeake Avenue. It will have the same type of a two, two-rail fence. From the north, east and west. Along that line, but it'll be open at this point so that people, only from the parking lot can walk into the shops as well.
East, east and west is this, right?
Yeah.
So you, so where's Chesapeake Avenue?
On the right, the right.
On the right.
On the right. Okay, so, okay, so it's, alright, thank you.
And you know, what is the timeframe for this project to come?
The time, time construction.
Cause I saw the.
It's too possible. I'm not getting any younger.
But it was really good to see it developed because I, I saw the initial project. I think it was like fifteen years ago.
No, 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 no.
It was, but.
When was this approved? Twenty-four?
It was before that.
When was this approved? Twenty, twenty-four.
Yeah, twenty years ago.
Well, in any case, today is today. I'd like to build it this year by the socks.
And somewhere up there, Mr. Richard, the, the green space that Rick talked about, that will add to the.
The only drawing we submitted.
The last, last page of the drawing.
We put some.
This is just backhouse kitchen. Here's what it looks like.
The stuff we have existing in town, but it's not.
Travel now or just put it.
In town, when you see it in town.
Well, you know.
It's, it's variation.
They don't have to maintain it. You walk by it.
Here's Mexico. Well, with its backs, it's behind something. This one will be behind, this one. Very much in the. And everyone on these restaurants, this grease recovery. Propane. Fire because these, they say food, but they don't show any food there. The kitchen may have no, but they say.
Oh.
Doesn't have contracts.
Excuse me, is that fence I was talking about? We built plastic fence. But this will be open at this point for the people who are parked here. Will be able to walk through and go, go to the shops and either enter from the rear or from the front. And this, this will eventually be eliminated at some point.
This is going to become the last.
Chesapeake, Chesapeake, uh. Chesapeake apartments.
The low income apartment.
Yeah, yeah. Tenants have been there fifteen, twenty years. When they're going to go, that's a good question.
Does that represent the full, I'm not passing through this area. Those are all pictures. I showed the full site of the castle lot.
Uh, not quite, not quite. It was down, down in.
No, I'm saying, did you have a proper picture?
Do I have a proper?
Yeah, full picture of this site.
Um, I'm not sure.
It's relatively the whole site.
Do you have like a drawn map?
Hey, Ron, let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
Why are you doing the landscaping behind it?
Because it was suggested at the last meeting when you were not here.
But you don't have to do it.
You mean the landscaping on the parking area and everything?
So just saying in terms of access to the back, cause you're going to lose parking back there due to, you need to have a handicap ramp. Uh, handicap space. And as I said, you're going to need to, basically everything east of that entrance is going to be, a lot of that stuff's going to be kitchen.
It's my dis. Fight this up, please.
Or zoom out one of the two.
There you go. There you go. So the full extent of that island, that landscaped island. You're saying is only there because we recommended it and not because it's required? For here, for a previous area?
It was part of breaking up the back of that building, so it wasn't just a plain building.
Mm-hmm. Something you mentioned that was suggested.
Yeah.
Also, this is as an aside. Um, and I think the town would appreciate this, but we have a vendor who's been here for years. And everybody loves him. He sells, what are those cakes called? funnel cakes. I'd like to, I'd like to work something out with him and move him over here for a temporary, if I'm not here, but he's getting old and he likes to continue to work and keep him going. So bear that in mind, that he might be here for a longer.
There's a contingency for the tenants creating Chesapeake.
I'm sorry, say that again?
You have a contingency for the tenants in Chesapeake.
Contingency in which way?
When you talk about the funnel guy, but you've also got people who.
Well, they're not going anywhere sometime. That's definitely, that doesn't, that doesn't happen until something comes along, along here. There's going to be some, something more permanent in hockey.
And this is just phase one of a.
Exactly.
Do you have a copy of Phase Three yet?
Yeah, right.
The plan is going to always think that, so you know.
Not that far.
The town would.
I'm gonna.
I think the town would need to.
The town would need.
Yeah, they, they want, they want the full concept. Yeah, we have a clue.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, well, that.
The tall parts.
Yeah.
I'll share what we thought was some time ago.
Let's, um, let's focus on this. Okay. So one of our concerns was taking away parking on Bay Avenue. And so that's why I asked the question about whether the island needed to be. Uh, continuous or whether it can just flow out into your parking lot rather than onto Bay Avenue. In other words, use that, um, I guess that we call that the north side?
I'm sorry, tell me again what you describe as the island. You can just mention it to me. I'll point it out.
Uh, it's not, that's not good, of course.
I think you're doing pretty well.
So this area is here. So this area is the area in question here, right? And this island, these are not necessary, but were put in because we recommended it. Our, our most recent concern was losing parking here for people pulling out here. And as I said, you're gonna have to do something here with regard to kitchen. Here's your grease waste there. So if you're putting propane tanks and grease recovery and carbon dioxide, and you're gonna have a step down for the restaurant people to get to these things, maybe this doesn't go. Maybe people go out this way. Maybe they come in here and they go.
No way, no way.
Can't do it?
They're gonna go this way. I want them to go this way because it doesn't interfere with this operation at all. People make whatever adjustments we need to make so that it'll work. And we're not, they're not losing that much space over here because we've got a couple of spaces that are blocked off in front of you.
Yeah, but if you move them over here. Okay, just, uh.
I mean, that, that was the recommendation from DPW was to reroute that one-way traffic, presumably to make a U-turn and go back to Chesapeake. So. I don't know if you have any more input or background on that, but.
I would concur with that just because two points, we are going to lose spots there. That we really can't afford to lose because that's mostly full on weekends and during the summer and all of that. And Bay Avenue is narrow. If you've got a delivery truck or a high-profile vehicle trying to come out that way, making that left-hand turn with those flower beds is almost impossible.
You made this two-way.
I don't think, uh, they didn't specify to make that two-way. I think they wanted the entrance, the, the entrance and exit to be the one you can't quite see there on, on Chesapeake. Yeah. At least that's my interpretation of the, of what they were saying. I can, I wanna, I'll reread it quickly. Current site plan shows exit of parking area onto Bay Avenue. Suggestion is to have parking directed back into the large portion of the paid parking area for exit to prevent loss of parking along Bay Avenue. And thi- this is DPW's comments on the submission. I, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't give much direction, but presumably some, yeah, some type of flowback.
It was fairly narrow, like on first Friday, it's closed, that area, so they wouldn't be able to exit from there anyway.
This Friday is six days a year. You know?
Yeah, but all those six days a year, all those people getting out of the parking lot.
They get out of the parking lot now. It's very difficult, but they get out, all two hundred and fifty of them.
But they don't come out on the Bay Avenue.
I'm following correctly. These people are regressing onto Bay Avenue, which is heavily traveled with people, bikes, kids. And so this is more traffic regressing onto Bay. Am I following correctly?
Yes, and then making a left on.
Okay, so why, why would we as a town allow that? Okay, because right now you have a speed hump, you have a stop sign. We have every possible, we have a walkway, we have signs, everything. So why would we allow more traffic to commit to that little area?
Well, I think that's why we're discussing, that's why we, it's a concern of ours.
I think the question is, why do you not want the traffic to go into the large lot? Is because you want to keep that a paid one and it'll be more difficult to keep track of it? So you don't think there's a problem with everybody going, leaving out onto, um, the larger parking lot area?
Eleven of them right now.
I don't see why it was meant to, to reroute the traffic if there's only enough space in there.
Right, can you go over the, uh, delivery and how commercial vehicles would be delivering to the restaurant and other places?
Was added since last, uh, management meeting. Offset, so that delivery trucks can park back there and make their deliveries, not only to the, the restaurant, but also the year. But look at some of the other restaurants in town. It's not easy. A small town, a small street. We have trailer trucks parked in front of Mexico, parked in front of Hook and Mine, and we make it work. People just drive around. It's not all day.
So the assumption is that those trucks would probably enter off Chesapeake, use that lot and then use hand trucks or something to bring it over.
The commuter bus also parks on Chesapeake. So the state controls that. The town does not control it. The state controls. There used to be a different place for the bus, but now they won't go to this one. The state controls that, not the town, the state.
Well, the state can't, he's, it's private property. He can put an entrance where he wants to put an entrance and the boss will have to find another place. Yes, it does.
They decide for the.
They can't block the entrance to private property. They can't just willy-nilly say, we're going.
I'll be glad to work with whatever is necessary to meet the work of the state, the town, the county, anybody. I mean, that's the way I survive in this goddamn business. It's not easy. They just gotta keep pushing and keep making adjustments. Whatever is necessary, I'll make it work. Yes, sir.
The entrance currently on Chesapeake.
Yes.
Yes. Is there an entrance on Bay from the park? So you create a new entrance on that side. Do you have an existing entrance?
But, but like.
You have an existing entrance on Chesapeake, yeah?
We have Chesapeake right now, and that, and that comes here, that we have an entrance here.
We took all the proof.
If he's gonna put a restaurant in here.
I think we should go ahead and have him do the presentation and then at the end of the presentation, we'll take any comments or concerns.
Yeah.
They'll be recorded and part of the public record.
I agree. Um, just also for anyone on the planning commission to make comments, we have another item on the agenda tonight, which also is gonna take some time.
I thought this is gonna be a breeze, but we've got a great audience.
We're not used to such crowds here. We've put out refreshments at Vietnam.
Yeah, uh, so first and foremost, any, any comments from, uh, planning commission?
Well, I like the landscaping islands, especially because now there is a movement to create tree islands in parking lots.
I mean, just from what's been said here, I think everybody really appreciates the design. It looks fantastic. I would make one comment on the design and only because it looks so good. Um, I would, hopefully, if you could wrap some of that nice design around to that south side where the restaurant is, where you were talking about the delivery part. Right now you have a, a fairly static kind of bulky facade on there.
That's the elevator.
It's elevator and stairwell, so there's not much, you can't put a window there, you can't.
Any, anything you can do to dress that up would be fantastic because you do have one-way traffic, you know, coming down Bay and you're gonna have a lot of visual impact. Even Baywalk is softened somewhat. So, and but, but that's up to you. We can't demand that. But anything you can do to make that more visually interesting, soften that impact as you come down Bay would be, be helpful. Um, the main issue I, I've been hearing from everybody really here is parking. Um, and I'm not sure how to, um, how to address that. Personally, I think I would, um, I would concur with the DPW, uh, recommendation that somehow you get some of that traffic put back onto Chesapeake and not onto Bay. Um, I don't know what other people on, on the commission feel. Um, if there's a, a groove, I also don't know how this works with DPW in terms of their input. Uh, how much of a, you know, critical kind of, uh, importance we have to place on, on that. So, any other comments from the planning commission would be, would be helpful, I feel.
Is the rooftop mechanical? Well, how deep would that be? Do you know?
I have no idea.
You put a kitchen in there, um, you know, now they have their, their exhaust for their fryers and their cookwares that go straight up in here. Um, I don't think that's a big deal. Everybody else will have probably heat pumps or something in the wells. It won't be seen. Um, but that kitchen equipment will probably be pretty tall. I guess that's fine though. A little bit of mechanical equipment won't kill anybody.
Just going back in the parking again, I'm, my presumption is because it's a paid lot now, you'll keep that separate, ideally for you. You keep the separation, keep that as a paid parking lot, correct?
Something off of the, and so owners of.
That's what you'd like to do now. And then presumably the, the, which is gonna be, which is gravel. Um, and then the pay part where you have the one-way, um, that would be free, essentially, right? For the shops, correct? Okay, so I, I mean, it makes, it's understandable why you'd wanna separate the two and still generate income from, from the parking area. Um, but I.
It does show it being paved in there.
I just, that was my assumption because you had striped spots there. I have my assumption.
Over storm and show.
Yeah, so I did, what was your, what was your plan to have for the, the, the adjacent parking area? To be paved or unpaved? Yeah, okay.
It's not meant to be permanent.
Okay.
Town has gotta somehow do some deep thinking and figure out how to come up with some parking to satisfy its needs as well. I can't do it all, but I'm gonna try. Now you see, you know, it takes so long to get one of these things done.
And there is enough budget.
That's, that's a recipe for disaster.
Yeah.
You can't have people exit onto a road that is shut down and open with people to walk in.
I mean, presumably for that, you would have to cut that part. Like, for those event nights, they have to press the gate up there. I mean, my, I think that's fine. My, my bigger concern is more the regular traffic. I know it's saying that the trucks will park here, those parking lots. Only there, someone's there, police, no one's gonna be there. If those cars park, they're gonna fall right in here and just be falling out of something.
And not open parking, it doesn't really help with the parking issue.
Yeah.
It doesn't change. Yeah, I don't, I don't still like.
We had a really good idea, Rock. Just change the direction and, uh.
You still have traffic turning off.
Plenty of traffic on Bay going ten miles an hour.
And it makes sense. Yeah, makes sense for you as well. You're catching ease of entry for both ways, either coming from Chesapeake or. Or Bay. Um, I mean, with that resolved, I, I might, um, call for a motion. Unless anyone has any further comments.
So the motion would be to approve the concept still. Cause it's still not a fully developed site plan, right? Or is it, are we gonna call this a fully developed site plan again? Just a minute, I'm gonna try to think this through. Well, subject to revised parking. Showing entrance off of north, off of Bay. Subject to some sort of accommodations for the back-of-house restaurant. In turn, what I spoke of with regard to everything that's outdoors being, uh, being enclosed in some way. Doesn't have to be fancy, but you've got a lot of stuff there. These grease waste containers are terrible. Yeah, I'm just saying, if I'm gonna make a motion, I'm gonna include something to that effect on the backside of this, having to have some sort of enclosure for restaurant.
I have my hands. I mean, I wanna be able to build something that's gonna be acceptable to.
And it really doesn't affect what you're building other than from the rear of the restaurant out. You can't have people slogging grease trash down the walkway, down the steps, back to the dumpster, or you're not gonna put it in the retail dumpster because that's just normal trash, whereas food trash gets emptied every day.
You have a motion on the floor, so you gotta give the motion, you can't.
I was trying to think it through. I'll rephrase it. Motion will be to approve the Plan S, uh, the plan, subject to revised parking, showing entrance off of north and showing some sort of enclosure for restaurant, outdoor restaurant equipment.
Second, need a second.
Need a second.
All in favor? Aye.
Have a good evening.
We'll see you again now.
Good luck. We're happy to see this moving forward. It's gonna be nice. It'll be a great addition to the town. Yeah.
Offense will work. This is probably not, probably had more at one, at one point.
Uh, the next item on the agenda. Uh, is a new business application. Um, I will read some of the, um, some of the notes from this to get us started. Um, this is ninety-one thirty-one Bay Avenue. And. Uh, building is within CM zoning, uh, within critical area, within team flood plan, plan boundary. Lot size is seven thousand one hundred ninety-eight, uh, building size is five thousand four hundred and seven square feet. Uh, lot has eight off-street parking spaces. Previous use of this address. Previous use of this address, uh, it's been an antique store and, and most recently, uh, pastry and grocery. Application, uh, applicant has never presented an application before to number beach planning commission. So this will be a new use and. A comment from DPW, um, business currently has a four-inch sewer cleanout. And a three-quarter inch water service connection, both connections must be upgraded to accommodate customer restrooms. Building currently does not have a sprinkler system, all work needs to be completed by licensed contractors. So our role today is, um. Uh, approving change of use, um, the use is being applied for officially as a tavern, is that correct?
Lounge.
Tavern. Lounge, um. Uh, it's conditional use in the zoning, um. We would need to approve parking plan. Um, and we, uh, have to approve outdoor seating. Uh, including the definitions and conditional uses, um, that are being applied for. Uh, we will take public comment on this, if you can allow us some time to have presentation, potentially discuss it. We will take public comments after. And. I think that's it, anything you wanted to add, Rick?
Uh, just that with the new business, with the change in use is one of the reasons it comes before the planning commission, because it's listed as a conditional use. Those uses have to be approved. Through planning commission process.
As the applicant here today. Yeah, would you like to take a couple minutes to present? Yeah. I could. Please feel free.
Well, um, I'll just the word, good evening, I'm so new, I'm new, um, to the community. But I'm just here to support my friend Crystal Lee Watson Duff, who's put in this application. She is not new to the community, she's been in Calvert County for over thirty years. Now she loves the town of North Beach, she's been a Realtor for almost twenty years in the community. Has done lots of transactions here in North Beach, both on, um, for homes here and also on commercial properties as well. And she has a vision for North Beach and downtown North Beach, which I know she talks about and rates about often. And, um, so she's here to present that today for your consideration.
Hi.
Hello, good evening.
Hi, I'm Crystal, I'm the one presenting. No worries. So we're sending the business to North Beach, it comes, it needs to hold whispers. I have the privilege of selling this commercial property, I am friends with the previous owner, Dale Thomas. So what I found after our previous business that went in was. The building held a lot of memories in the community, a lot of relationships. Um, that's kind of where the speakeasy vibe kind of came in, because I liked the idea of. Creating that from a street view, it would still look like an antique store. And then opening back up the venue area for the community to donate. Or possibly sell their antiques in there, with creating a space for the community to come back in. And engage and kind of create that feel again.
And can you, can you tell us about some of the proposed uses you have for the liquor license that you'll have? And some of the details on that, you know, seating, so forth.
Just an idea, as far as like events and different items that we felt like the community would look for. Definitely family-friendly events, I have three children plus two bonus children. So our age group is twenty to eight in the community. And what I find is there's not a lot to go and do with the kids. So one thing we will focus on will be family events. If you look at the floor plan, it shows a screen where it also says the stage, the projector. With the couch and the seating kind of going towards that. We would like that to kind of circle around more so this stage where we could do family events, rags towels. Halloween costumes, um, family karaoke nights. Just something to bring more unity with the families, with the kids. And then in the evening, you can see we have VIP seating, we have the two pianos for the dual piano evening. So.
Sorry, we're trying to get that rotated out there, we're not able to, I'm doing the same on my phone now.
We have the two pianos for, um, dual piano evenings. And also what we were thinking was that the evening shows, comedy shows, murder mysteries. Um, more info events, and just kind of get different clientele age groups that would welcome something for everyone. That would kind of bring in that as far as the engagement and the community.
And you'll have a tavern liquor license, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that means by, by law, known, for those don't need to serve food, would be only alcohol.
Local restaurants and allow the use of them. Their food services are would be following the business.
Your application makes mention of food and ingredients, so clarify, no food preparation or presentation. Okay.
Cause we would like to open the venue up for people, like families that would like to do the time coming parties, where the stages will have that projector. So we would like people to maybe use that for graduation parties, wedding rehearsal, anything they would like. Would we be allowed to offer catering? In the venue that they could bring in a caterer of their choice.
I don't think there shouldn't be any restrictions on that.
Would they need a kitchen?
Yeah, I don't know, in terms of county health regulations, I don't know if they're, cause that would come into play, we wouldn't regulate that. Um, and I don't know what those are, I.
Yeah, I don't know, that's county health department, probably, um.
Yeah, I mean, you may need wash facility, I, I don't know, yeah.
People that help book into that catering.
How are you gonna wash up the glass and set the bar?
Say, in our, in my opinion, the dishwasher and the sink and stuff would be there. In the bar, on this main back wall right here, we have an assembly with two dishwashers. We would just build it into the actual bar lineup, or on the other side where it says storage. It's a large utility room, it's just cinder blocks currently. Which the plumbing is also back there, so it'd be very easy to add things back there with counters.
Here, the cigar area.
Okay, over you, the other part, we were thinking bourbon in the cigar room, obviously, we know no smoking, this is a family-friendly business.
Not inside.
Yeah, but our question was, would people be allowed to purchase cigars? If we did decide to go that route and leave the property with them. Obviously, on this patio, we would probably advertise no smoking, but would they be allowed to have access to?
The property, right, that's not town property, the brick, the paved area. So you stamped concrete is there, damn right. So, yeah.
Excuse me, I just need to, uh, interject that. We, the planning commission can't offer advice to the applicant regarding what. Law is or isn't with respect to the purchase of tobacco, sale of tobacco onsite, or the, um. Uh, other, um, business-related questions that the applicant has asked.
I would do, I would look into that, was the long hat, not the liquor license, what, we will get approved for.
Okay, your application shows, uh, basically you're open seven days a week.
Um, did, in discussion, we won't be open seven days a week.
One, one of the leave room in the event that we had a special event, say, Super Bowl Sunday, closing Sunday generally. Is to open it up to have the flexibility to open for a special event or something like that. Case by case, but.
Is the building sprinkler currently?
No, it is not, so we'll go through the permitting, that is one question we will have.
So you'll have to determine some occupancy.
Yeah, and the ceiling is completely open, so if the fire marshal comes in and says that's something he would advise, it'd be easy to install.
And what about restaurants?
There's two restaurants in the building currently, one on the one side, if you go into the other section, there's also a separate one.
Is that a staff one and then a public one?
Yes, kind of.
And as said right now, kind of, that's kind of the vibe of the set.
So the, essentially the public or single bath, single toilet, I mean. And that's also determined by occupancy, handicap accessibility, all those sorts of things, right?
Well, I don't, I will probably have to widen that door for handy, for sure.
Or are you gonna have one for employees and one for public? Is that your intention?
Yes, depending on, cause there is a wash sink in that section, so that would make sense. We would definitely be open to converting use to that additional question.
And that is one of the comments from DPW, says currently there's a four-inch sewer cleanout and three-quarter inch water service connection. Both connections must be upgraded to accommodate customer restrooms. Um, does not have a sprinkler system, the sprinkler system would be mandated by county, correct? Um, and I'm presumably also for permitting for the cleanouts and water service as well. Do we have an issue with taps on that, if they increase the size of the water?
Yeah, so they currently have two taps, they're allowed forty seats, they'll have to negotiate that with the property owner to purchase more taps. To add additional seating, but the increase from a three-quarter inch line to a one-inch line is just necessary.
Okay.
The type of use it's gonna go to.
The forty seats, is that just indoors, or is that more than outdoor?
Three seats.
Total. Okay, but that's just seating, or the types of events they're talking about.
Maybe user counted by seats only.
As far as DPW is concerned, not as far as fire marshal is concerned.
Right, that would be state fire marshal.
Interesting, we did negotiate in our lease with the owners, and they are open to purchasing more taps. We were just told that at the current time, we needed time to figure out what would be permitted and what would be allowed. But we definitely know that that's something that will have to be looked at once we have.
How, I was looking at the pictures that were added, and, um. Yeah, kind of reminded me of New Orleans. So I was wondering, how are you gonna? Have that kind of vibe, speaking to me, yet to make it, I think, good for kids. I can't, I don't see that.
The kids might not know, to be honest, we probably use it, we did like, let's say, farm animal thing or anything like that, we would go right on the patio. So anything as far as that, like, let's say we do farm animals, anything where the kids are petting. And patio is our area, so we will open that up. Free snow guns, cotton candy, anything that's like kid, young kid, we don't want that there. And as far as where the screen is, where the projector and the patio movie.
Uh huh.
If the way we laid out the building, we can pull beanbag chairs out of the back. And they can sit even on the floor and stuff and use all that space. So with the decor of the couches, the parents could sit out behind the children. And they would sit all on the floor and have special mats or something real hard.
So all of the furniture and decor and all of that is.
Along with it, yeah.
It can't hurt it. If you're having a kid's party in there and they're running around, it's.
Yeah. The way that this is designed, if you look at these spots in the drawing, those are actually the wooden posts in there. So the way these couches will be, they're actually gonna go around the post there, and will be like an end table, so it kind of eliminates that. So definitely shit.
And also too, during the kid-friendly family events, it would be a curtain, completely closed the bar off.
So the floor will constantly be closed unless we have an adult event, because I would like to have it open during the day. Real estate agent, it's hard to find places in the county that the music is not so loud and you can have business appointment. So we would like to open it up to professionals, use this space as a business meeting. Yeah, that they could come in, sit on the couches. Be able to access our laptops and, um, new clients.
We'd also set the lighting inside in such a way to where at nighttime it's got a different. Little heat or calm kind of vibe to it versus during daytime, during kids' events, it's gonna be more brightly lit for safety.
So all of the things you're speaking on the side to the evening speakeasy, will have no food attached to them. So business, we need kids, things, all these other events will have no food.
So it's a secret part here, we would love to be in the often hot one, on the events.
I, I'm, I can't speak to that, but, um, I.
Should answer your question regarding food, it wouldn't have any on-site food preparation or anything like that, but much like, uh, wheelhouse. You don't have any, uh, uh, on-site food, but they allow food to be brought in, whether it be through. Door dash or across the street to, or get by or fill in blank. Uh, and then that's, you know, and also for events, we have it catered, whether it be mission barbecue or hook and bind or something like that to bring it and set up. And.
Okay, presumably for functions, you rent it out as a function hall, right, essentially, right, by the hour.
So does that make it a different use when you do that?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Yep, we're essentially talking about two different business models.
Yes, well, plus a potential retailer, so.
Retail office for professional business of government purpose? Which is permissible?
Uh, we're just looking at uses here.
Uh, indoor, whether it was indoor museums, theaters, bowling alleys, arcades, or indoor recreation facilities. They're both listed as fully permitted, not conditional uses, so.
So with regard to the conditions for the tavern or lounge, appears that most of these, with the exception. Of. Bathrooms, taverns must provide a minimum of one dedicated bathroom for tavern patronage. I guess that meets our need, but it won't necessarily meet. County or health department until you process it, but I guess it would meet ours.
It's covered under one.
Okay, and this is food must be made available for consumption. Either by onsite preparation, or patrons must be permitted to order in and or bring food, and that's what you're talking about. So right now, we have the same situation with unauthorized brewing. They have, you can order right from your table there. And we don't have any special conditions with them with regard to disposal or. Health department or anything like that, right, it's just trash, waste, okay. Okay.
They're actually a separate. Separate category. Unauthorized brewing falls under the, um.
No, I'm just saying similar with regard to the bringing in of food, we didn't have any. Any special requirements.
But we don't really have anything for usage that would, like a reception hall type. Yeah.
No, just what we said, I think the closest one would be the business, uh. But then you couldn't even say that this business could be for a wedding, could be for a birthday party, right? But then you couldn't even say that those business could be for a wedding, could be for a birthday party, right? Could be for anything. So what would that fall under? Still under lounge, I suppose. Yeah, maybe leasing the.
So we said you weren't gonna be open seven days a week.
At least two days, I would Sunday.
Another day, we will take around some ideas, but maybe Sunday, Wednesday, but maybe Sunday by the other clock.
I've been here at evening hours as well, it's what the town down there kind of closes down, which is why, which is eleven, we stopped serving until ten thirty. Close the high eleven.
But we put in the application potentially with the flexibility to stay overnight only for. So occasions or a square party or something.
Yeah, so how do we, how do we regulate that? Um, honestly, once we prove seven days, you guys can do whatever we want, so we have to figure out about how, what the.
That's what's in your application now. Sorry, I didn't send your application, it should be just food preparation, food ingredients, words like that. That should be taken out.
He said four to eleven just. For the lounge in the evening and nine ninety-four in the day. So you're automatically gonna switch right at four o'clock, you can build in some slack times. And you're gonna do this with three servers working twenty hours a week. I mean, not that I have anything to say, but I'm just, I have a lot of questions about how this is actually going to work. Just because of recent events. I'm curious, I want to ask all my questions, I fully understand what it is you want to do. Um, and instead of curiosity. You say that your target demographics for the evening crowd is twenty-one to six.
You know, I'm out.
Just curious, you know, the operating hours available to a tavern license? Have you applied for tavern license yet? Not yet.
You know, on the map. The outdoors. I think I'd like to see something a little bit more. Detailed and not kind of hand drawn. What I'm seeing is that you've got four tops out on the lift, but it looks like. You're go taking them the way out of the street, that's the way this is drawn. So you know that you cannot block somebody's sidewalk. And you've got two tops along bay. Not sure about the space there.
There's a. I'm trying to remember where where town property starts and where this property.
At the sidewalk, the sidewalk is a town property, everything else belongs to that. It's very narrow on bay, it's only about four feet wide on bay, so I'm not sure you can do. Does that mean that you can serve alcohol or consume alcohol on that? Because it seems to me that in order to serve it on bay, you would have to walk on city property to get to the small strip that's yours. On bay, and I don't think that would be permissible, but on uh seventh street there, you've got a pretty good area.
Is there anything there that goes with the building or is that all sidewalk?
And it has a small strip, yeah.
They have, they have a door that opens, they have doors.
Yeah, there's a door.
Onto.
I have to pull the flap, I think there's about a four foot piece that runs along the building. Tavern license does allow for alcohol consumption anywhere on the property, not just within the building. Um, tavern licenses are good until two AM. The reason for the tavern licenses, all of the other liquor licenses that you can apply on mandate onsite food preparation.
Yeah.
Or. I don't know, that's what this said, it said or, no, the liquor license, you have the tavern.
The other thing we do need to review is parking. Yeah, um, and looks, does this, does this match what is actually been marked? I've actually haven't seen that since it was redone, is that?
It hasn't really been redone, it's just gravel with some.
Anything marked or?
Six by sixes up and.
Are these to scale, these eight spots, like are they, have they been measured?
No.
Okay, so is it eight sponsors? It is, okay, so a, including the handicap.
Really not a handicap, so it's just gravel.
Let's get ten on here, okay, so so eight total, that includes one handicap and access for handicap.
There's eight spots in that block, the gravel lot. Isn't there really gonna have to be angled parking instead of straight?
I think so too, that's too narrow there. I mean, this doesn't show that, but they. Yeah, uh, none of this is to scale, so I would. I think so too.
That's one way, a lot of people are gonna be trying to go back out that way.
Yeah, they're gonna stick with that way, that's gonna.
They're gonna go all the way down Atlantic. But a lot of people do anyway, there's a lot of parking going on.
You said it's currently forty.
Currently two E D U's onsite.
That's forty three.
But that's something that they could negotiate with the, at the county level if they want to.
Yeah, it just doesn't, it doesn't show how many seats.
Yeah.
Now, do we count couch seat or how does that get counted?
Any, any seats for?
New seat.
So we, for couches, we would need to know how many seats are on there?
It probably kind of too much of like, like when you look at a booth, it's almost like calculated the same way. Seating it, um, there's probably.
I mean booth, and destroying booths and tables add up to about forty and then the bars are another ten. Just for some reference. Eight at the bar.
Yeah, if you count the, the private seating too.
Not counting that private area there, there's, so there's another. Yeah. But again, none of this is to scale, so that makes it difficult for us to gauge the actual space. Eight spots.
Parking's an issue.
A parking plan that we gave reasonable. No requirements.
No.
And I believe this access, if there's no parking here, right, this fairly narrow this access off bay, right, because there's a curved cut here, right?
Correct, it's very narrow, yeah, and there's no through.
You hear? Oh, there isn't, I thought there was.
Well, if you scroll up, they have the picture of where it's open to two hours, I mean that.
Oh. Yeah, it's not accurate because there are lines there showing parking where there are driveways. And planters and different things like that, so I, I can't, I can't look at that and tell you how many spots are there.
So then this is access from seventh street.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Saying if it's angled parking, they're gonna have to back out, they're gonna have to go down.
Back up, I don't know, it's not to scale, so it's like.
Kind of be, you know. Yeah, you're gonna have to go. You're gonna have to go all the way around. Yeah, because you can't cut to an apple.
It's one way, contrary to the beliefs of some people. So yeah, so coming out of that lot, they have to turn right onto seven and then go down Atlantic, which is gonna. Push a lot of traffic down.
A lot of people. But it's really late at night, nobody's working. Cause they'll go, shouldn't do it, an apple list and then try to cut. I definitely never done it myself.
Let me see where, so five two oh four, as far as determining the location of parking spaces. Uh, five two oh four three says such required space shall be located to first reasonable and convenient parking facilities. Where the occupants or guests, building structures that are designed to serve, parking shall not be located in unreasonable walking distance from the pro use. With five hundred feet being a preferred maximum distance. And it should have a convenient pedestrian connection between the property and the parking.
My question is the same question that I always have when we talk about parking in that corridor. How many cars we can stack on top of each other, because we use the same spots. It's the same, everybody's open the same hours. You, we can't, that car is on top of each other, there, there's gotta be a point at which. You know, okay, this, this is consistently full, we can't count on this part.
Anything we'll say, just with living in the community, Mexico's part long even across from this building. Once the dinner crowd moves out in there and the evenings that you go down there, it is very light. There was not a lot of families are the same around parking in that spot.
That lot is privately owned.
Isn't that lot supposed to be for shops?
That lot is dedicated to Mexico and part of the post office.
Part of it, I think the sign says. Mexico and they walk.
And. Yeah, people were parking there that are not in those two places can be done.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to get as much onsite as we can. Because this, this is going to be a high. Traffic use.
Potentially.
Potentially, yeah.
Yes.
More so than our uh pastry market would have been. So yeah, we want to see your parking.
So, yeah, we do need to come some agreeing on parking. Um, as well as conditional use. And the other thing we would need to come to some agreement on is outdoor seating. Well, I think a site plan to scale is needed, um, considering the outdoor seating is a budding town property. Um, considering parking is a concern, I mean, this is hand drawn, it's nice to give us some sense of things, but nothing is to scale, it's not. But you know, true site plan, so, uh, I think that for me, that would be a start.
Yeah, I wonder if we already have seen a site plan for that lot.
Yeah.
That they could.
Yeah.
From the former.
Yeah, no, they had fairly detailed site plan from the, from the previous uh. Yeah, for the whole, for the whole thing. Where, where, I mean, so you wanna know where the building sits in relation to the sidewalk, what's owned by the property. What's owned by the town and everything to scale, especially for the parking and egress out of the parking lot. All of that would be helpful, I mean, just as you have here, um, there's eight spots and you have ten, just because I'm. Yeah, so that would be, um, I think that would be a first, I, I do think you're gonna need to have those angled parking. Again, without the space, it's difficult to tell, but I, I'm fairly certain you would need angled parking.
They need to provide an onsite handicap space.
I don't know, I mean, that's county regulations, right? But if it's onsite, that's on property, I would assume, so. Well, I'm not sure. Yeah, I mean, because that, that this parking is owned by the property, and so I think if you're allowing, providing parking, does have to be. I don't know what the ratio is.
Do you have our attorney? Did she answer that?
So there's a lot to be determined by the county and the fire marshal and things of that nature, so I think as far as our concern. Other than parking, we leave it up to them.
Okay, um, we, I would like to take a few minutes for our public comments, just one second. Just got here, so I wanna do a, just a, a quick go around for commission members, any other, any other questions? Okay, so we, we do have some time for some public comments, um, I would add that you. Step up to the mic, state your name, please, um, and limit of, limit of three minutes. Um, and your, your comments will be taken into the record, we may or. Oh, name and address, uh, three minutes, your comments will be taken into the record, we may or may not be able to answer questions.
Very much, my name is. Which goes to this place and I think it's good to have the familiar area that. Venue for us, my question is, how does this name correspond with the. Unique day to night venue experience, what does the new day to night and whispers?
So whispers.
Want to be allowed because it is on the back of the private privileges?
Uh, no, because the first of our music and events would occur in the building and with the way we designed it. The music is actually on the other side away from the backside of your home, so in the actual building, no.
Okay, so it's only why.
Yes.
My name's Mary Bosman, I live at nineteen fourteen Frederick Avenue in North Beach. Um, and I have a comment, this will be our fourth. Venue with no food, the people saying we'll just use the local restaurants. We read uh Bonds for Dinner last Friday and. We read uh Bonds for Dinner last Friday and uh the wheelhouse was killing them. So, and they close at eight o'clock too, so I think it makes a lot of sense for you all to really pull the. The restaurants that you plan on having people order food from, because I don't think it's gonna be realistic to get food. All of those places, all the restaurants we have have very small kitchens. And um it doesn't sound like a realistic venue to me.
Mom's gonna have a new restaurant opening.
That's what I like. I like the idea of addressing having catering come in. I'm open to that, and maybe I can partner with someone that is not in the community, I, I really appreciate that question. Especially because I enjoy eating in the community myself. I would absolutely, with the liquor license, be open to partner up with someone else rather than just.
We have a lot of liquor places now.
Yeah, we have a lot.
Very many sit down, have a bounty meal places. And are you talking about catering, you're talking about five days a week, you're talking about whole day, every day? It, it, it seems kind of unrealistic, no, that's good. I'm just curious how this is gonna work, but if you see the kitchens of the places we have now, they can't scale up for a big. Crowd to be, have been delivered, and if you call some of the places that are farther out, they don't come to North Beach. So it's something to think about.
Very much.
Hi, uh Angela Long, I live at nine two two five Annapolis Avenue, so I'm also in the neighborhood. And I'm really excited to see something hopefully coming into that building. And you know, the business that may go, um I have two concerns, and I think they're more for the town. Than necessarily just for this business, the one is trash. Um right now, I live on Annapolis Avenue, I walk my dog regularly in that neighborhood. Um kind of around the block and down to the welcome center and back. There's one trash can outside of Authorized Brewing, there's a trash can outside of Mexico. And there was one on the boardwalk at Seventh Street. Sometimes there are all three who are overflowing, if it's been a busy weekend. There are no trash cans around the parking lot, that's bounded by Chesapeake and Annapolis Avenue and Ninth Street. That's owned privately, there are no trash cans in the vicinity of that lot, and it's often a mess. And I personally have picked up trash from that lot, I would love to see some more trash cans. Uh because they're really needed, uh the other is traffic direction and flow. Seventh Street is one way, Atlantic is one way, and Annapolis Avenue is one way. Even when the leases market was operational, um people would. Maybe park in front there, or even if they're going to Mexico, they park in the angle parking on Seventh Street. They back out and they go the wrong way on Seventh Street into that intersection, they do it regularly. People are not expecting cars to be coming the other way on Seventh Street. And it happens all the time now, so if there are people coming in and out of that parking lot next to this building, they're gonna do the same thing. So that needs to be managed, um because it's dangerous, people are not expecting traffic to be coming that way. Um you know, people are walking in that intersection, it's just unsafe and um. People also regularly turn around on Annapolis Avenue, because one of our neighbors has. A large driveway that looks like a break place to turn around, and it's just parked past the parking lot. So they're driving down and they're like, oh, need to get a parking space, oh, I can turn around here and then they go the wrong way. Of Annapolis Avenue back to that intersection. And then they figure out parking or whatever, they backed into my next door neighbor's vehicles parked at the curb twice. I mean, I don't know what the solution is, we've added arrows, painted arrows to the street that doesn't seem to help. There needs to be more signage, more one-way signage, something, because it happens, and when it's busy. It's just crazy, people are turning around all the time and going the wrong way on Annapolis Avenue. So this will just exacerbate that. And thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted, I, I just want to make sure that you're all aware, in that little parking lot, the flood committee. Or TPW has gotten approval to the big control panel. The Seventh Street, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew about that.
I didn't.
Okay. I don't know how it will impact, but um. It helps with flooding, so.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Okay, any, any last comments? Great, thank you, thanks for shut up, just for showing up tonight and being engaged, it's great to see faces in the crowd, we usually. Have no one, so. So, um. As I, as we've mentioned prior, we really have three things we um need to focus on for the commission, um that's the. Use, change in use, um parking and outdoor seating. So. Any comments, um at this point, anyone would like to make a motion, either on what's presented here. What we would like to see presented, if it's lacking at present. We can, we don't have to make a decision tonight, we can take time to review, um. I think, I mean, one thing at this meeting, I think we should do, if we go that route, is to ask for any additional information, anything we'd like to. Supplement this application, uh to help us in any decision making. So, but yes, we can, we can make a decision on what's been presented tonight, um as we've done in the past, we can make recommendations. For resubmission, what we'd like to see, um we can.
You can do a combination of things, if, if you think that the conditions are easily that. The, you can approve the use and. Still require them to come back to present the, to approve the parking based on the changes.
Yeah.
And then you wouldn't have to go through whether the use was approved, the next time you would just approve the portion and the other issues that you have.
I think the only thing that we went to is with the site plan.
I mean, the thing for me, the, the, certainly the site plan is, is really not the quality we need to kind of understand. The amount of people that potentially be in that space. Um versus the size and, and also the parking, and how the property lines uh meet town property. So both indoor seating, outdoor seating, um and having a site plan to scale would be good, uh you know. At least did submit a number, I mean, two or couple site plans, which are public record and we should have them, um so that may be a place to. To start, you know. So.
I think I need more information about everything that would be on a site plan before I could. Make any kind of a decision. On whether this is gonna work or not, but that's just me. I don't feel I have enough. Information. Based on what, this is, this is the beginning. But I really would like to see that site plan with everything clearly delineated before I decide whether or not this is gonna. Work the way. It's been presented.
I agree. And any comments or more information needed on usage? And how that fits, it's a, I mean, if it's on our tavern definition, uh if it's on retail as well, the other part is a little less clear. Um and then the overall part of a, of a tavern license, because that's essentially what underpins the business.
My only con- um concerns are probably not within the venue of this commission, you know, I. Um review small businesses and business operations, and that's what I do for a living. So when I look at the mixed use, when I look at. Um I did like that the bar is gonna be closed off because you're gonna have kids, that's like, that was the very first thing that popped in my mind. Um when I looked at it, it was good, um so um. I was concerned personally about the time, the, the layover time, if you wanna put it between when you close operations during the day. And then we start evening operations, so that, so that might be outside of the, our purview here. But it's just business operating things that I see like, uh this is going, great idea, a lot of mixed use. Not sure about implementation feasibility and. Long-term profitability, but that's your games.
Um so I'll leave back on that a little bit, so I'll tell you, uh my concern is that um. Um hosting children parties where you have no food service available is in no. Way ever going to approach the profitability of selling alcohol. Full stop, um and so I think the business model you're commenting on will morph into a. A straight ahead speakeasy, and indeed, your name is Speakeasy, all right, it's not meant to appeal to. Eight-year-old kids, uh and a cigar bar as well, so my suspicion is that this is really a. Tavern, it's a tavern, um and I think we need to, um and I know as a commission member, I need to. Uh whatever you present here, what underpins your business is that liquor license, there's no restaurant, there's nothing else. And there's other concerns about the availability of food, we have limited restaurant, limited kitchens in the town, so um. What you present to us today, maybe you, be your true intentions for what happening, um but what we're providing you today is a license to operate long term. Not just for the next week or the next month, it'll be iterations of how your business develops. And profitability drives every private sector business, so, and profitability. For this business to me is selling liquor, and that needs to be decided. When a new business is, is offered in the town, um and so, and liquor is little. Different animal than other types of businesses in the town, so we have to take special consideration when businesses are granted these. Um so, I'll just. Leave that at that, um but that would be one of my concerns going forward.
What are we doing?
Standpoint, I mean, as far as their, their, their use, we have to determine. Whether they meet the guidelines that are established, and it's their prerogative in terms of. What they, how they run the, run the business and whether it's profitable, it's not our, not our side. Um and I think they have determined the, from, as Ricketson, from a youth standpoint. Uh potentially, there's a food consideration. Much of what will determine whether you're allowed to get a UNO will be based on county and fire department and. You know, your parking plan, handicap access, bathroom, sprinkler, all that sort of stuff, um so I think it. From a youth standpoint, I personally don't have, uh I, I think a strong opinion in terms of trying to dictate. What somebody should or should not do in business, uh and allow them, if they meet the guidelines, to proceed, subject to all the county and. Fire marshal regulations, I think it's perfectly reasonable to say we wanna see a site plan with regard to onsite parking and, and go from there. But as far as I'm concerned, I would be in favor of approving the use.
Okay. I'm on the fence. And realizing that they're meeting these guidelines, understood that they. They do. Yeah. Um I think at a minimum, the commission would like to see a site plan, so I suppose we could. Delay the entire vote until we see a site plan, we could do some combination of that. Um to approve parts of these, approve use, non-approve parking. Some, you know, some combination of those. And still ask for the site plan next month.
We're motionless.
Yeah.
I move that we table this until we receive. That detailed site plan, and then we can make a single informed decision.
Do we have a second? I can't second you.
I know. I think y'all wouldn't like it.
Doesn't sound like.
Other motion. You can't make a motion?
No, I can't.
No.
And I can't second you, so. So I'll make the motion to approve the use. As submitted, subject to. Uh. The submission of a site plan for the purposes of determining. Uh. On property, use and parking. Because everything else is subject to county. Do you have a second?
All right, I second the last one.
Can I have a second?
All in favor?
I.
I'm gonna be a nay.
Oh dear.
Did you?
Why second, I had, everyone looked at me, I go, yeah, like. Need to see the site plan.
Okay. For what I need, then we will have work on getting the scaled site plan of the facility, property lines. Sidewalk and uh.
And proposed seating on property.
Outside, outside on property, exterior of the building.
And how does this work in terms of county and bathrooms and. Other things that might need to be reviewed by county experience courses and so forth.
So that'll all be done with county permitting, let me do their build out.
Let's say, just for example, if multiple bathrooms are required, and a site plan changes, how does that work with us? Do they have to resubmit a site plan with us, or do you have enough to look at it again, or?
I wouldn't think so. We don't go through our DPW, but that's what the, the grade to the water line covers.
Okay. Great, we have any other business? Okay, what's I'd like to make a motion to end the meeting? Any public comment, I think we, we've exhausted all public comments, so. Okay, anybody like to make a motion to end the meeting?
I move re-adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
I.